Good evening and welcome to tonight's Yountville Town Council meeting for Tuesday, April 17th, 2018. I'll go ahead and call the meeting to order and ask for a roll call, please.
Here.
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 Vice Mayor Doran Becker.
Here.
Mayor Dunbar. Here. Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Our next item is the adoption of tonight's agenda. I don't believe we have any changes, so is there a motion to adopt the agenda as presented?
So moved.
I think we have Vice Mayor, and was that a second from Councilmember Durham?
Sure.
All in favor? If you could please cast your ballot.
Ballot is not coming up.
If it's working, how about all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We've got Jason on that in the back of the room, potentially. We're going to move ahead to the proclamation, presentation we have tonight. Proclamation recognizing Visit Napa Valley in the National Travel Tourism Week of May 6th through the 12th, and I know that we have Catherine Haywood from Visit Napa Valley here to receive this, so if you could please join me at the podium.
If I may invite some GMs from your local hotels, that would be great.
Of course. They just got here. Yes. Do you want to come on up? Oh, here we are, yes. Come on in. You're all hiding back out there. I know them.
What is this?
Hello, welcome. These are a lot of name tags. So I'm not sure if we have to worry about the service going on at our lodging partners right now. Hopefully not. This is a proclamation for National Travel Tourism Week, May 6th through the 12th of 2018. Whereas the town of Yountville has been a travel destination since the late 1800s, flourishing with the arrival of the railroad, merchants, and farmers. Whereas today, the travel industry continues to have positive effects on Yountville and Napa County's economic prosperity and image abroad, as well as business productivity and individual travelers' well-being. Whereas in 2016, visitor spending on lodging generated $6.8 million in tax revenue for the town of Yountville, over 60% of the town's budget. Whereas in 2016, travelers' spending in Napa County generated $1.9 billion in economic output, which supported over 13,000 jobs and generated tax revenues of $80.4 million for county and local governments, funds used to support essential services and programs for our communities. Whereas it is the hard-working people employed in the tourism and hospitality industry who through superior, and I think even, yes, who through superior customer service and comfort to guests are the core of this industry and its success. We also recognize the industry's support of the community during the fire evacuation and recovery, extending world-renowned hospitality to our own citizens. Now therefore, I, Mayor John F. Dunbar, do hereby proclaim May 6th through the 12th, 2018, as National Travel and Tourism Week in Yountville, California, and urge the citizens of Napa County to join me in this special observance with appropriate events to commemorate, congratulate, and celebrate the people in tourism and hospitality. So on behalf of all of us, we thank all of you and your colleagues. Thank you. Who would like to speak? Anybody? Anybody? Come on now. Whoever's hiding in the back.
You didn't do a straw vote.
There you go. Come on. You're the closest.
I don't really have to say anything, do I?
Yeah, I think you're something fast. All these people are watching, and the world is watching too.
We're happy just to be part of this community and be part of you guys along with everybody that comes to visit us.
Thank you very much. Thanks, Catherine. We're going to move on now to the public comment portion of our agenda. This is when anyone who would like to address the council on an item not on tonight's meeting agenda may do so, and I know we have some folks here, if you'd like to come forward and share what you'd like to share.
Thank you, Mayor Dunbar. My name's Ren Harris. I'm here speaking on behalf of my family today. We happen to own Yountville's ag preserve, 33 acres that are included in city limits. Might note that back in 1965, my father-in-law, Andrew Palissa, who was the county planning commissioner, lobbied Andy Fajani, the current supervisor, to please leave us out of the town of Yountville because we knew someday somebody in the family would be here asking you not to turn us into anything else but agriculture. And 50-plus years later, that appears to be the case. The land has been owned by the family since 1936. The first member of the sixth generation will be born in September and will become the 12th heir alive, if all goes well. That'll be owners of that land along with the rest of the family farm. The vineyard on the land is newly planted. It has a life expectancy of about 30 years. When I first arrived, it was a prune orchard. Across the road, which is now a vineyard, was a place where some of the dairy herd was kept. Prior to that, it was a feedlot. My father-in-law's intention was to keep it forever in the family. Things are organized legally in such a way where it would be extremely hard to break up, and we'd asked that the town of Yountville and the council help us in that regard because we're not going to sell it. Even if it gets rezoned, we're not going to sell it. That, as I understand the current rules, is something we're free to do and will do. However, if you rezone it, the value of land, you could probably add a zero to it in terms of value, which should be great if we plan to sell it, but we don't. However, death taxes are out there waiting for us someday, and someday that's going to get reappraised, and if it's reappraised at residential value, a sale maybe could be forced. That's probably 30, 40 years away, but we'd rather not have to face that, and we'd like to just leave it as it is and remain part of what I hope the folks in Yountville enjoy. And we'd like to just keep things as they are. Be happy to answer any questions if you have anything in particular.
Well, we can't really have a dialogue when we're doing this public comment part, but we certainly hear your message and your family's message, and if you've been listening to some of the conversations with the Envision Yountville General Plan Review and Update, and a lot of folks have speculated about your property, but it's not any of our or their business, it's your business. So we appreciate the fact that you've brought your perspective to us directly, and so that message is being heard by everyone directly, so thank you for that.
Well, appreciate the opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to bring any item forward to the council? Okay, we will move straight ahead to our consent calendar. We have two items on there. Is there any discussion or action on the consent items? And we'll try to do the electronic voting if we can. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent calendar.
I'll second.
Are those showing up? For all of you and not for me?
Nope. I don't have a vote cast on mine either.
Okay. All in favor of the consent calendar items, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimously. Next up, we'll go to item 8A, a presentation of our Sheriff's Public Safety Quarterly Report. Welcome, Sergeant.
Sergeant John Holman with the Napa County Sheriff's Office. Good evening. I'm going to go over a few things for the last quarter, covering January, February, and March. So our calls for service, we responded to 869 calls for service in the town of Yountville, some of which were also outside deputies, valley deputies, for some of these calls when I was going through the statistics. We took 40 written investigative reports, and we made three arrests during that quarter, which actually was probably about half of the quarter last year. And in looking at it, we'll get to it, but the good thing about it is crimes against persons and crimes against properties, both went down by about half. Crimes against property were actually more than half in the decrease. Thought that was very positive, especially being that for all of us since October, it's been a busy time and difficult time, but I'm always glad to see crimes against people and property going down, not up, see if there's anything we can do to maintain that. Traffic collisions, we had three non-injury crashes within the town limits. We had 167 traffic stops this quarter and 58 traffic sites, so we're still trying to keep it very close to that one-third enforcement and two-thirds education, verbal education, if you will, based on people's ability to be educated, hopefully. Some things we were involved in, there are some other things, but one of the things that had one of the greatest impacts, and I loved hearing about it, was Dr. Seuss Day at the Yountville Elementary School and getting to read to the kids. A lot of great questions, well-received, and it was just, it was a good time. We were happy to be included in that. Tuck McGraw Foundation, we're working with them currently, and I was able to sit on a board meeting and as more of a consultation-type thing about PTSD and peer support and treating their folks out there, staff as well as some of their residents, and to work with the West Coast Post-Trauma Retreat, which is something that we do with law enforcement and fire anyway, but to be able to advise them on how it's gone for us for like the last seven years with that team was, it's working really well. So we're making some new connections outside of the tragic incident that happened. Napa Valley Community Housing and the Retirement Center both had some problem tenants, and we were able to do counseling and bring resolution without unnecessary enforcement, get them to a place where both sides were happy with the outcome. So doing a little mediation services, and it's going well, and all because of, again, the ability with Yountville to have that relationship and talk to people and that trust. Just a safety tip reminder, using dowels and sliding windows and doors, as well as the low-cost magnetic alarms, they can help us prevent burglaries and give us notice, get us time to handle situations if you need to call us. And I would also say for anybody watching, you are never bothering us. If you hear bump in the night, we're equipped, and we've got a lot of friends we can call, let us go check it out. Just pick up the phone, let us do that because it's not a bother. I hear that more often, that's why you constantly have to hear me saying that, whether on Nextdoor or anywhere else. "Well, I didn't want to bother you." I say, "Well, I actually get paid to do this. I like it, so call me." I just wanted to say thank you to our Yountville community, the outpouring of support for my staff and I following this last tragic event that occurred in March at the Veterans' Home Campus. You guys set an almost impossible standard for other people to, other communities to meet or go beyond. The relationships are so appreciated and what it does to, since I run our peer support team and basically teaching law enforcement officers, and I also work with fire, to do self-care, so that we are best equipped when we show up and we put our uniforms on to serve you. And to be, to have an empty cup, to come here, be able to do what you pay us to do, provide great service, because of what you guys do, what this community does, and talking to a lot of the firefighters and talking to a lot of law enforcement officers, it means a lot. They feel cared about. Every, I mean, I think everyone in the room has probably asked me questions, "How's this person doing? How's that person doing? Is there anything I can do?" And that is healing. I think that's the best word. It's very healing, and it makes people want to, "What else can I do to serve? How can I serve better?" The answer is typically take care of yourself, be a happy person, a whole person, and then come to work. So thank you very much for the community that provides that environment. It makes it an honor, and more than that, it makes it a pleasure to come serve.
Thank you very much, and please share our appreciation and our commitment to supporting you and your entire personnel each and every day also, so thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Next up, we're going to get a Parks and Recreation 2017 Annual Report.
Good evening. I'm here tonight to present our 2017 Annual Report. As you may recall, we used to come to the council after the summer with our summer report, but I felt like the time was now to just start doing an annual report. There's so many things that our department's doing outside of just summer that I'd like to come and share with you. It also gives us internally an opportunity to look at the year as a whole and our statistics and information and track how we can better spend our money, or the town's money, and track utilization and effectiveness of what we're doing. So our mission is to offer healthy, cost-effective, and innovative activities and spaces for the community to enjoy. Like I said, this report will share statistics and information about what we're doing, how our residents and non-residents are utilizing our activities and spaces. I gather this information from several areas, so we have an enrollment data that comes from our online registration software system ASAP that makes that really convenient for looking at enrollment and tracking that. We also look at Springbrook, our software system for finance and budget tracking. We also do surveys and then just look at utilization of all different things to kind of assemble all this information for you. For the public, I did bring extra copies of the annual report if anyone's interested in reading it in its entirety. So I just take a look back, we tend to think in Parks and Recreation, there was a huge change in 2009 for the department, which was when the community center opened, as it is in its current state with the additional buildings. So when the community center reopened in late 2009, we offered 16 programs per month in the new center, and that totaled about 26 hours a week in programming. As of last year, we offer 41 programs per month with 80 hours of programming in the community center a week. That's pretty significant growth in the last eight years. Just comparing, so how do we, how do we do all that, right? So we still, we started with five full-time staff. At that point, we had 36 part-time and seasonal staff over the course of the year, and then seven contract instructors. And so currently, at the end of 2017, we still have five full-time staff. We do now have 45 part-time staff that work seasonally and some of them part-time year-round for us, and we have 24 contract instructors. So you may know, but for the public as well, contract instructors are people that we enter into a contract with to teach some sort of specialty class or program for us that we wouldn't be able to do in-house, and so they're responsible for doing everything from start to finish for that particular program, and it's generally quite specialized, something like teaching Zumba class or some sort of art program, or leading a specialized discussion group. So I formatted the report to really follow our budget process, how we break things up in the budget, because it just makes more sense to me that way. But before I start that, when I said the five full-time staff that we currently have, so those people have not changed over the course of the eight years, but I think what has changed is just, we have just evolved and grown, and I think that they got on the bus. And so I don't want to be remiss as I go through this report and not just truly thank them for, you know, being so excited to better serve our community and, you know, the sideways glances when I came on in 2010 and really pushed and pushed and pushed for us to kind of be where we are today, so, you know, thank you guys. So in our administrative and services area, it's kind of a broad category, but it mainly comprises the administration of the department. So when you look at our budget, the expenses are generally, you know, me and Stacy and those administrative overheads-type things. And so we look at all of the fees and everything and how we handle our registrations. I look at this particular area, as well as park rentals and our special event permitting. So just as a comparison, in 2017, we processed 4,591 registrations. In 2014, is as far as I can really go back easily, because that's when we started with the online registration software system, but that first year, we were at 1,923. So again, just huge growth in how many customers that we're, you know, talking with and registering and talk, that are coming through our building. I also just wanted to point out in this area how, we haven't talked about this in a while outside of the budget process, but how important non-resident utilization of our programs is to Parks and Recreation. So we do serve a lot of non-residents in our programming, but it really sustains those programs for our residents. We don't have a huge population here in Yountville, and so if a contract instructor has a minimum of 20 students in a class and we realistically can only get seven or eight residents, those 14 non-residents are really what is going to keep that program alive and well here in Yountville, and so we don't dismiss that. We utilize our brochure to market mostly to Napa residents, but we welcome those non-residents as well. But we're planning our programs and services, we're really focusing on what it is that our residents want and need. That is our first priority. If visitors want to participate in those things, that's wonderful. If non-residents come and they help to sustain it, that's also wonderful, but first and foremost, we really are focusing on our residents. So our park site reservations in 2017, we processed 130 park site reservations, so we have the five reservable park sites, four now at Yountville Community Park, one at the Veterans Park, Veterans Memorial Park, and then we also handle the Bocchi Court reservations as well. That is down a little over the past, since 2014, and the reason for that is in 2014, we were still not charging our residents for those reservations, and we've slowly added some small fees over the years, so it kind of has dropped just a little bit. But we still have a very high utilization of that service for our residents, and we see about 60% of our rentals are non-residents though, but it is a great service for our residents. So looking at day camps, in 2017, we had 926 campers, so that would be individual registrations come through. 28% of those are residents. That's obviously up from 2014. This is a great example of a program that we have offered for, we're going to celebrate our 25th year of Camp Wyville this summer, which is pretty spectacular. From what I can gather, we are the oldest continual day camp in the Napa Valley, not taking into consideration like the Boy Scout camp because that's an overnight camp, and I put them in a different category. So 25 years is pretty impressive. This is a program where about, like last summer, 60% of utilization is non-residents, but as you guys all know, we don't have a huge population of young families in Yountville currently, but the idea of sustaining our school and making sure that we're still providing services for those people, not just that live here, but that also work in our town and up valley, is really important. And this is a great area where we are able to have a high level of cost recovery. So our goal is just to continue to evolve and sustain this day camp program, but it's obviously very popular. Our community center facility, so this part of it, we're just going to really look at our rentals. So private rentals are something that we categorize under the community center facility, but also just the overall management of running the facility and keeping it viable and well-maintained. So in 2017, we had 79 private rentals. Obviously, that's trending down just a little bit from 2014. It kind of ebbs and flows from year to year based on the economy. Another big impact to our community center facility is just really the amount of time that it is actually available. So as we have grown in our programming, which you saw in that first slide, to over 80 hours a week, means that we have less availability for private rentals. We try to, we've kind of come to an understanding internally between programming and rentals that we need to keep certain days available, mainly weekends, but there's only 52 Saturdays in a year, right? That's the hot day. And then we also are trying to grow our midweek conferences and meetings, and so we have internally, sometimes we, you know, know going in and to advance that we have to skip some days for some classes and have a paid rental. So for example, we had the large dent conference this February, and we knew that well in advance because typically those plan, you know, at least nine months to a year in advance. And so we're able to cancel classes for that day, and our students know ahead of time, so it's not a huge impact, but we kind of have this balancing act that we're always kind of performing with that. And so that's an area that we are looking at in the future to kind of continue to grow as those midweek meetings and conference rentals and how we can potentially partner with other properties in the area to do that. So the Yountville Community Pool, and obviously we're going to talk about that again later tonight, in 2017, we had just under 6,000 visitors, about 25% of those are residents, and that's obviously trending down significantly since 2014, which is something that we're going to be focusing on in the next year, is really analyzing how that, how that trending is looking. So we have, we operate the Yountville Community Pool seasonally. It's open for 10 weeks generally in the summer, and we serve, in the past, all different. We started the day typically with our senior veteran swim time that is free for veterans and seniors over the age of 50, and typically we have a couple lanes open for lap swim and then areas just to relax. We also were offering swimming lessons in the evenings from 4:00 to 7:00, five days a week, and then our community pool time, which was six days a week, and we'll talk a little bit later about some of those changes. So the after-school program is another program that we offer. We offer it throughout the Napa Valley Unified School District calendar for the Yountville Elementary School students. In 2017, we had 550 enrollments, and so we look at that as, and so they enroll by the month, so that basically counts for the school, for that calendar year per month. Its average is just under 50, 55 students a month. 22 of those are residents, which is, pretty much mirrors the school's population. The school's population is, I believe, 27% non-residents of Yountville attending Yountville Elementary School. Again, this is one of those programs that we continue to sustain because we want the elementary school here, and there's no other service providers of childcare in town for the school day. This has trended down since 2014, and part of that is due to the decline in enrollment in Yountville Elementary School and really district-wide, but positively, we're seeing growth in that. I was just on a call today with the principal regarding next year, so that is trending up. I believe we're up 19 students this school year, so we're seeing the benefit of that as well. Leisure programs is something, an area that you're really going to see some amazing growth in, so it's our largest growth area in the past years, especially with resident utilization. So leisure programs is kind of a broad term, but it includes our golden ticket program, our leisure classes like jazzercise, zumba, yoga, and also our excursions. So in 2015, and I started there, because I could easily add up all the numbers, we had just over 3,500 enrollments, and of those, 34% were residents. We just started the golden ticket program in 2016, and then as of the end of last year, we ended with 8,824 enrollments, and 70% of those are residents, and a large part of that can be attributed to the golden ticket program. We have over 125 members right now on, or excuse me, 105 members right now. Our goal is to have 125 members in 2018, and the majority of them take three or more classes, so every class they sign up with is counted as an enrollment. So... So, in that number is, as well as like the other classes that I discussed, jazzercise, zumba, yoga, and then our excursions as well. But this was definitely something that has been a work in progress over the past, since I started here. We knew that was our residents, which tend to be, you know, age 50 and above, and have different interests, but overall want to be active. We knew we were kind of missing that population in looking at the demographics that we were currently serving. And so, surveys and trying things and failing and succeeding and all of those things played into what I feel is a really great program right now is the golden ticket program. So, our goal with that is to just continue to, not necessarily grow it because we're at 22 different classes for this summer, which is pretty amazing, but continue to kind of evolve and make it fresh and make sure that the participants are getting programming that they're interested in and stay involved. In your report was some really, we did a survey recently and some really interesting results as far as, we asked some very simple questions, like, do you get out of your house more? Do you feel better mentally? Do you feel better physically? And 75% of those that responded, which we had, I believe, almost 60 respondents, said that they feel better mentally. And that's huge. I mean, and that is exactly the reason why we wanted this to happen, this program. We want those adults getting out of their homes and around other people and learning and trying something new and feeling better. So, I think we're hitting that mark. It's very exciting. So, our sports programs, this area mostly, it does just account for pickleball, open gym pickleball, open gym basketball, and then we still have our mini sports programs, which is for kids under the age of five or five and under. So, in 2017, we had 7,312 drop-ins or registrations, and 68% of those are residents, which you can see a whole lineup of them right here. In 2015, that was just over 3,000, and is also when we started pickleball, was the next year. So, that's definitely a large part of the utilization. We offer some sort of drop-in sport program seven days a week at the community center. Yeah, it's pretty impressive. So, community events and programs, so in this area is all of our events that we do for the community. Holiday events, the residents bash, Yountville Days, movies in the park, music in the park. It also includes our popcorn Wednesdays, our free bridge group, anything that's free and open to the public is something we account for in this program area. And some of it's estimating. Obviously, we don't, you know, thumb count everyone who watches fireworks on Fourth of July or comes and watches the Yountville Days Parade. So, we estimate it. But I think over 18,000 is a pretty solid number of the people that are served every year through the programming. This is not a cost recovery area. It's something that the council you support and approve to make our community a better place to live and work and visit, and I definitely think that we are achieving that, and many partners assist in that. But it's a great service. So, the last major area for us is Yountville Arts. And so, this is technically a commission of people appointed by you, by the town council, but as you know, they're very active with programming and events and projects, and our staff support that. And so, we, in 2017, the Underpass mural was fundraised for and completed, which was very exciting. And Yountville Arts installed eight new sculptures along the art walk. And during the course of their work, which part of their mission is supporting art and artists in Yountville, they supported 72 different artists, whether that was during art sip and stroll, along the art walk, or in our gallery at the community center. So, 72 artists that for, I would say, 98% are local and regional artists, so they're not coming from very far away. So, that's very exciting. So, almost done. What's next for us? So, 2018, we're already well into that, and then we'll talk briefly in the budget process, but we're looking at an online facility scheduler. So, through our same system that we handle registration through, you would be able to go online and see when a park is available or see if the community center is available. So, that's something that we're looking at. We're also looking at a comprehensive five-year financial and utilization forecast for the pool. I think we're going to be having some very difficult conversations around operating the community pool, one of which is happening tonight. So, we just want to make sure that we're bringing as best as we can some really thoughtful information to both the Parks and Recreation Advisory Commission and the council when we talk about that, as far as CIP projects that are looming, as well as utilization and staffing costs and all of those types of things. We're also looking at refreshing and rebranding the after-school program. We're currently working with the Yountville Parent Club and the school and the staff there on an after-school model for Wednesdays where we would have more enrichment activities that would be open school-wide, but also to the students in the after-school program. But really, just rebranding it, we're, we have a new recreation, he's not that new at this point, but new recreation coordinator, new ideas and excitement, and so, we're really looking at how we can refresh that program this year. So, it is my pleasure to be here tonight, and thank you for listening to me. I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
There's a certain young man that was not photographed in any of your presentation.
Luke was not in the presentation.
I didn't see him in the report either.
Sorry, John.
Wow, well, don't apologize to me.
Small redheaded child.
But my wedding was, so it's okay.
Don't do, I did that on purpose. Yeah, it looks so lovely.
Any questions about the report from council?
No, but.
Councilmember Dormin, please.
I don't have actually any questions. I just want to say thank you, Director Holland, for the report and for everything you and your staff do.
Thank you.
Being a resident beneficiary, thank you.
Thanks, Mayor.
Ditto.
No, you guys are amazing. You really are, and everybody does it with a smile and lots of enthusiasm. Thanks.
Absolutely. It's my pleasure.
And most recently, breakfast with the bunny and the wall of doughnuts.
The wall of doughnuts.
And the Easter egg hunt.
Yeah.
Some real eggs.
Some real eggs. Jen's sucking on that.
Thank you very much for the presentation.
Truly, thank you.
Please thank your whole team for all the hard work all year long.
I absolutely will. Thank you.
We have three public hearings coming up. We are going to get to our first one, which is the item that was continued from April 3rd regarding an accessory dwelling unit appeal. And I think we want to start, Gary, you want to explain where we stand with that before we open the public hearing back up?
Yes, Mayor and councilmembers. Both the applicant and the appellant have requested a continuance tonight. They've stipulated and agreed to that. Because both parties involved have requested that, it is staff's recommendation that the council continue this item after opening the public hearing and taking any public comment there may be, to a date uncertain. They have requested that it be on or after May 1, 2018, while they attempt to resolve the dispute privately between them.
Very good. Any questions from council about that? So, I'll go ahead and open the public hearing back up again, and I will start with recognizing we received an e-comment from Stephen Kimberly Cook and Juliana and Monica McCrary, and also an email I received and forwarded to staff to include in the record from Wendy Riker related to this item. Anyone else in the audience like to speak to this? Everyone got the message it was going to probably be continued? Okay. Seeing no other comment, is there any discussion by council, or shall we, I'll entertain a motion to, we should close the public hearing first. I'll go ahead and close the public hearing and invite continuation of this item to a future meeting date. Is there such a motion?
I'll make a motion that we continue this item to a date uncertain. I'll second.
Are we trying again on the?
You can, you can try. It would be great if you could try one more time.
Let's try it again. So, Councilor Moore, if you could try the button.
I did.
Okay.
Not working? Okay.
Thank you.
So, you have the motion and the seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimously. Thank you. Next up, we have master development plan amendment for Hotel Velagio. Sandra?
Good evening. Tonight, you have before you an amendment to an earlier approved design for Hotel Velagio, and that design was before you in October of 2016. And at that time, it was unknown that there was a City of Napa water line that ran through the Porco share area, and that has since affected the design. Julie, can we switch over? So, the approved design is shown here, and it was a Porco share that was centered on the building, and it featured this open-air design with roughs on wood with separation between the ribs, and it had an outdoor fireplace that anchored the south elevation of the Porco share and was a new element on the expanded lounge that you see on the front of the building, which was enclosed within a 36-inch stone wall. What you don't see on this photo is the dormer on the other side of the Porco share, and by being centered on the building, it eliminated one of two as part of that design. The changes result in the Porco share staying in its current location, which is not centered on the building, it is slightly askew to the left, and by doing so, they are able to maintain both of the existing dormers. You see the elimination of the outdoor chimney and the stone wall because both of those elements would have sat upon the easement as well. The front lounge is extended about nine feet further west so that it aligns with the back of the curb and the driveway and the parking lot, and landscaping and a deeper planter are used as separation between the parking lot and the lounge area, and the fireplace and water element was moved into this location as well to keep it off of the easement. And those are the changes that you see with this requested design. I'll go to the next slide, and this is a front elevation showing them in elevation view. They're shown here as well in plan view, and we're really looking at the section that's at the front of the building and to the upper right of the building. Here is the approved design, and the water line easement runs right through that area, and this is proposed. We do see a slight modification to the landscaping and the planter beds in the parking lot, and that's due to the realignment of the Porco share. It results in the loss of one of the parking spaces and the reallocation of those in different places on the property. So, this project was taken before the zoning and design review board last week, and member Denton was concerned, or voiced concern with some of the changes, that he preferred the originally approved design and the way the Porco share was centered on the building, the balance of the single dormer and the fireplace, and he was of the opinion that the ease line should be raised for a more dramatic approach. Ultimately, the vote was 3-1 to recommend approval to the town council, and that's what's before you tonight. We analyze this project in terms of design review and its goals, of which are to preserve and enhance the quality of the man-made environment, to maintain and improve the qualities and relationships between buildings, and to protect and ensure the adequacy and usefulness of all development. And we look at, when we look at it in terms of this, we find that the proposal is consistent with these goals, although the proposal is strikingly less dramatic than what was originally before you, and which was originally approved. We've also noted some of the changes to the outdoor patio because the patio area is increased in size, but we believe this is not a concern from a use perspective because the lounge is for the use of the guests, and so, parking isn't triggered, parking concerns aren't triggered by the increase in area. Additionally, we note the parking situation in the staff report, and we do see the elimination of one of the spaces that was approved. But again, we note that this isn't a concern at this time from a use perspective because there is an excess of four spaces at the vintage properties. That's reduced to three with this proposal, although we do note that this will reduce future development potential on the site as a whole when they come forward with new changes. So, that is the revised design that is before you for discussion and a decision tonight.
Thank you. Just two quick checks before I ask other councilmembers. So, there was a 3-1, so three of the four ZDRB members approved these changes.
Yes.
And kind of what's driving this is we can't allow permanent structures to encroach into an easement, this one being the City of Napa's water line. That's the reason for the changes.
That is correct, yes. The applicant has been in discussions and negotiations with the City of Napa to potentially have allowed some type of structure to span the easement and not damage the line. They didn't come to an agreement. There was also discussion about moving the line, and again, there was no conclusion to that. So, yes, the design has to respect the City of Napa water line and cannot encroach over it.
Right. Okay, thanks. Other questions of the staff report from council? Any? Councilor Dormin?
Thank you. So, I have like three main areas where I have questions. The first one is the front parking lot, generally speaking. So, this initial, the initial design with the large portico share was approved October of 2016, correct?
Yes.
And this is the first proposed revision?
Yes.
So, I was not on the council at that time. I was, however, on the zoning and design review board. And I went back to my notes, and it talked about the use and the configuration of the design of the front parking court, I think they called it. And at that time, the applicant said there was no intent to use that for any kind of permanent parking. It was unload, load, check-in, check-out, ingress, egress. And now, I see that the parking configuration is changing, but my question is, is there any memorialization of that stated intent of the applicant in anything that we have in our paperwork to date?
No, there's no requirement or restriction by condition that the area be used only for loading and unloading. It can be used for parking. It will be under their management and their valet and their different parking management programs that will apply once the project is open and running. The guests tend to park in the front and then later move to the rear because it offers better and quicker access to the rooms. So, each of the spaces fulfills some need in the overall scheme of parking needs at the property. But there is no restriction that this be loading only or that they are required to park here as well, although they are counted as parking spaces.
And so, other than the applicant's goodwill, there is no way to, currently, there is no way to assure that it is used in a limited situation for parking?
Correct.
And under the new design that's proposed for this evening, there are more cars facing Washington than under the original design. Is that correct?
No, I believe there's actually one less.
Okay.
Here's the proposal before you tonight, and this is the one from before. They've added more dramatic planters and islands to delineate the entrance from back of sidewalk with the two trees that you see in the center.
But there, are there more?
So, it reduces the one, the number of spaces closest to Washington, and if you look further down into the left, you see two new spaces near face of building that were not there in the previous approval.
So, the total under this new design can be used to park two additional cars?
No, it's actually a total of one less.
So, one more, a total of one less?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So, then, my second area was what, what kind of landscaping overview, landscape design overview do we have? Because under the new, the original design, the portico share was what drew your eye? And it was quite, in my view, beautiful and dynamic. Now, we're just going to have 75 feet of concrete coming up the middle there. So, what, what design review does staff have over that, if any?
Well, first, to address the concrete, that walkway that you see from back of sidewalk to entry is not concrete, rather, it's pavers, and they're using the same design that they've used at Vintage House to delineate a more interesting entry instead of just basic concrete. And then, the landscaping that you see before you is actually in building permit review based on the concepts that were presented earlier for design.
And I think when I, I should have used hardscape.
Yes, hardscape.
So, do we have design review, does staff have design review authority over the hardscape? Because one thing I know that has been discussed is a large expanse of simply hard surface without visual delineation. So, does staff have some say-so over that as part of this design review?
Well, we're, we would be reviewing the building permit for consistency with the approved design. design and even though it was conceptual in nature, are they achieving that goal? So that's what we're looking at.
And the approved design has a pedestrian walkway similar to the new proposed pedestrian walkway?
Yes. It's the same walkway, it's just not covered for as large as an expanse.
Right. You're cutting 23 feet off the port cochere.
So it's more-
So there's 23 more feet of uncovered hardscape.
Uncovered, yeah.
And then my third area is the patio. Are my figures roughly correct that the difference between this and the original design is it's about a 360-square-foot expansion? You said it was nine feet deep and isn't it like four parking spaces wide or so, give or take?
It looks about four parking spaces wide by nine feet, yes.
So it's about 360 square feet. Am I right? Nine times 40?
I think you are.
Okay. Don't make me do math. So you said that the lounge is for the use of guests and I'm assuming the lounge means the outdoor patio. Does that also include the side patio?
Yes.
So it's use of guests only is what you're saying?
That's how we've interpreted the 1997 approval because there was discussion about the facility being open to the public and it identified the spa and the meeting rooms. So this wasn't specifically spelled out but I suppose you could say it wasn't specifically spelled out as either allowed or not allowed.
But our interpretation is that the front and side patios are-
For guests.
For guests only. How about the side, and I think it may just be an error in the renderings, on the initial one, it shows no roof over the south patio but on the new one, I think it did.
Right, they didn't show it here.
That was just an error. They're not adding roof line there.
That's correct.
So it's always been a covered space.
Yes.
Okay, that's all I have. Thank you.
Any other questions from council? Seeing now, I'll go ahead and open the public hearing and invite our applicant to come forward and share your comments about the modifications. Welcome.
Thank you. Thanks for having us. Steve DeVino, I'm the general manager of the estate Yountville. As Sandra pointed out in the staff report, we did try very diligently to work with the City of Napa to come up with a resolution to encroach on the easement and it didn't work out well. I guess it's a bit more complicated because this water pipe runs through the entire town and runs through Thomas Keller's Garden and the city of Yountville and our property. So we really tried everything we could do to get that original plan. It didn't work. So we are in front of you to try to modify. Good.
That's it? Simple as that?
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, we have no choice unfortunately other than to modify it as presented.
Okay.
We do have our architect here to talk about it a little bit more, can answer some of the other technical questions.
Maybe we see if we have any questions that need answering and if we don't, then you're here just to listen.
Right.
Thank you. Would anyone else in the public like to comment on this item? Or would you like to-
Oh, yeah. I'm sorry, I wanted Paige to address a couple of things.
Okay, sure.
Hi, Paige Martin, landscape architect.
If you could just pull that microphone down just a little bit. There we go. Thank you.
Sure. So the goal of the landscape is still to be the same as what we had shown before, to be drought tolerant agrarian style landscape. And we tried to squeeze in wherever we could, trees and planting, accent planting. The easement is difficult because you can't put any trees in the ground and so as Sandra had mentioned, we have four planters in front where we had four mulberry trees before and they'll just be smaller trees. We're going to do Meyer lemons because we thought that those would look nice in planters and would be able to be maintained at a good size. And so those are the four trees that are in the courtyard and then there are four trees coming into the entry area and those are olive trees. And they're smaller, they're the little ollies which is more of a dwarf type of olive tree but there's four along that main entry. And we tried to slip in planting wherever we could. So when the port cochere got shortened, the entry pathway got more narrow as well and we added that planting which you can see on the left side of the entry garden. And then we added more trees and more accents to the side that faces Washington Street. We've also worked really closely with the City of Napa during our permitting phase to ensure that all of our landscape and civil documents reference the easement and we've discussed how the contractor needs to work with the City of Napa prior to doing any construction within the easement and also any type of compaction in that area. So we've worked, we've really tried to do our best to work with the City of Napa to appease them and make sure that the easement restrictions are followed. And then we've also tried to maintain the overall goal of the planting design for this new design and it'll maintain basically the look and feel that we've been presenting to you and what we've been trying to do throughout the estate property.
Hey, I'm not sure if you're the one for me to ask this question or Mr. DeVino but looking at your renderings, it would appear you've added four windows on the north side of the port cochere that were not there when the port cochere was more slightly to the middle.
Yeah, I might ask-
We're going to get somebody else up.
Yeah, so this is Bruce Wright from SB Architects.
If you're going to show up, you might as well speak, right Bruce?
I'm here, I'm here. Bruce Wright with SB Architects. So to answer the question, we're maintaining the existing condition of those four windows and the back of house configuration. The prior design which shifted the port cochere in question 14 feet further north offered some internal reconfiguration of the building. There were some offices up above that were in the dormer that was to be removed but based on this latest direction, there was no need to go back and remove those existing windows and change the use that's behind them. So they will be maintained.
I'm just looking at the renderings with the approved and the proposed that we have here and it looked like on that north side, the four that exist now in the proposed. You're saying those exist and they were going to go away?
Exactly.
Okay.
Yeah. One dormer and the four windows that existed in the existing conditions before this approved condition were to go away but the latest proposal is to maintain those windows.
And basically the stone wall in front of the patio on the south side of the port cochere is now small plantings that don't violate the encroachment area?
Exactly.
Okay. Okay, thanks. Other questions, Vice Mayor?
And this is actually for the landscape architect. So I'd like to find out how tall are the ollies going to be at maturity?
They usually grow to eight to 10 feet.
So they will provide some shade as it were, a little bit?
A little bit but that planter is quite narrow and so we couldn't put in anything too big. So-
I see.
Yeah, so we were wanting to put in shrubs rather than trees.
I see. Thank you.
Any other questions of the applicant? Councilor Dorban?
Thank you. I believe this one is for Ms. Martin. The bushes that you're going to put where the wall is going to be, how deep are those? I know that there's a height restriction of three feet but how deep is that piece where your fire and water features inset?
Those are basically a mix of perennials and shrubs. So it's-
Oh, sorry, the distance. Are they two and a half feet or three feet?
Oh, that planter, actually, one of the things that changed from the approved plan to the proposed plan now is that planter got deeper and we took away some of the hardscape so that there would be more planting between the vehicular area and the outdoor courtyard and that planter I believe is nine feet deep. And it has three rows of planting. It has dietes and cistus and lavender which all will be about three feet high.
So basically, the entire expansion of the patio is bushes or plantings?
Correct. If you look between, yeah, that's exactly what I was talking about. So, right, so between the back of curb and the patio is now all planting. And in the previous design, the back of curb had a little walkway where it connected the two areas that you cross the auto court. It had, you know, a three or four-foot path and then just a very small narrow planting and then a one-foot wall, width of wall. And now that wall, 18 inches of planting, four foot of paving is all planting.
And are you expanding that to get past the easement toward the west?
Not necessarily. What we were, that line is only about three feet beyond what we were previously showing. So it's very similar. We were using that distance, when we got into more of the technical drawings, we wanted to, we needed some extra distance to deal with the grading from the face of the building out to the parking lot because we were trying to meet the existing parking lot grade and keep that entry way at less than 2% for ADA access. So we needed a couple more, actually three foot six more feet to deal with that slope.
And where are the public entries to the patio in the proposed plan?
There, along that center access, you can come in right off of Washington Street to the front door. That whole area is open and then all the way to the right, you come off of that curb ramp and then there's a direct access through on that side.
Okay, thank you. And I think the rest of my questions are for Mr. DeVino most likely.
Okay.
Thank you. Hi, thank you for coming. So what is your plan for parking in the front?
Yeah, operationally, we're going to provide valet parking. So it's really a pickup and drop-off area. It's not meant to be permanent parking. That's the same thing we do at Vintage House essentially.
And that has worked out. I don't think, I can't remember Vintage House's stripe. I just, I'm wondering if a guest, like if a guest pulls in there, would you allow them to park their car for four days there?
No, not at all.
Okay. And then my other question for you is, the patio in the new design, do you intend to serve food and beverage, including alcoholic beverage out there?
Yes, we're permitted to do that.
And do you intend to limit it to guests only?
At this point, yes.
And so if you wanted to expand it to public use, you would come back for an amendment to your use permit?
I think it's an interpretation issue because of the timing of when the documents were created. So Andrew, do you have, we discussed this and-
Gary might want to chime in.
Yeah.
So the existing approvals in 1997, which I reviewed in preparation for the meeting tonight, do expressly limit or state that guests and non-guests can be in the inn and spa and the conference and spa facilities but it doesn't expressly address the lounge one way or the other. And typically in conditional use permits, the condition needs to be expressed to state one way or the other and the current approvals don't appear to address that.
So you, and I don't want to put words in your mouth, so correct me where I go wrong, I know I will. You are asking to expand your possibly public service area by 360 square feet without applying any additional parking requirements to it that would otherwise be required to serve to the public?
Again, I think this is an interpretation issue that we probably have to look at closer.
Can I ask a clarifying question? Are you planning to change any of the operation that's been existing for some number of years, 18 years?
No, that's exactly what's been in operation in the past.
Or 19 years or 20 years or whatever?
So in the past, if someone came in and wanted a beverage, we served them a beverage. That's the way it's always been run.
So you've been serving the public all this time?
But there was no, there was no outdoor patio before to serve.
Yeah.
And that's my point, is we're adding an outdoor service area that could be public serving. And sorry, I'm getting into council discussion. You have answered my questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions of the applicant?
Sorry, but I guess I would look at it as no change of current use is how I would look at it.
Okay, thank you. Any other members of the public like to comment? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and invite further council discussion. Sounded like Councilor Dorban, you were ready to bring up some issues?
I think it can go one way or the other. Either it's guest-only use and there's no additional parking or other burdens that go with it or it's public use and we are for sure expanding it by 360 square feet, the use space. Despite what's happened for 18 years, if it has, but I don't know that it has, we're expanding that and in fairness to our other businesses here who are wanting to be public serving and cannot because they do not have the parking availability, I think it's an either or to me. It's either we clarify the 1997 because the design drives the use, we clarify that it's guest-only unless and until the business comes back to us and asks for a change in that, or we clarify that it's always been intended for public use and then we have to impose additional requirements on the 360 square feet because we don't have anything, I think it would be a separate motion or a separate moving part from the applicant to come back and say, under your other ordinances, can we change the parking configuration? Can we change the parking numbers? And I don't have a horse in the race. I'm just saying, I don't see how both can fit together in fairness to our statutes and our other businesses.
Also understand that the patio in the front has been approved. It was approved previously.
And that's why I'm sticking with the 360 square feet that is being enlarged right now. Ideally, when, a year and a half ago, this would have been brought up but it was not. So that's why I'm limiting my discussion to the new expanded area.
Okay.
Sandra, for clarification purposes, can you identify what the parking requirement would be for the amount of space Councilmember Dorban is talking about?
Well, are we talking a limited service restaurant? Are we talking a bar? Typically, it is at least one to three to one to five seats based on seats rather than area.
So according to the rendering, there's 14 seats in the patio.
So potentially three spaces. If it's based on area, which is a retail standard, which this really isn't, one to 300 is typical. So it's really not knowing how exactly they're using it except to support the guest experience. Specifics as to food and wine would lead me to believe at least one to five per the seats is appropriate.
One parking space per five, you're acting like it's a restaurant.
Well, the limited service, food and beverage service to that area, not a restaurant which would be one to three but more the sort of enhanced limited service like the Protea example where there's some level of service because there's food and wine involved but it's not a sit-down restaurant.
But isn't this an interesting situation where we have a hotel where people are parked for four days and what percentage do we give to the guests walking in and what percentage do we give to the hotel guests?
That hasn't been analyzed. That's something that we took before you for Hotel Yountville and so we don't really know the specifics. We know this is a shared facility with this inn and the V marketplace and generally there's a reduction that's granted because people use the parking spaces at different times based on use, the daytime use versus the nighttime use. So that's probably appropriate here. In fact, it was granted to the 1997 approval for the project. A reduction was permitted because of that shared model.
Vice Mayor?
So you're saying that it would involve three parking spaces, is that correct?
If we were to apply the one to five standard, yes. And if this correctly represents the number of seats, often these conceptual plans don't.
And since there are parking spaces in the front of the building, could they designate three of those to accommodate that area?
Could, yes.
Thank you.
And there are the three excess spaces- And there are the three excess spaces still. If we were to allocate them to this use, it would obviously take it down to zero, zero excess spaces.
Councilmember Moller?
So since they're going to have valet parking, I think you're, I think what we're hearing, a lot of us saying is that, you know, we would like to talk through, you know, public use of that patio area. Doesn't seem like the owners opposed to that. I'm not sure where we're going to end up. But if they have, if somebody comes in to park, their valet is going to say, oh, are you a guest? And they're going to go, no, I want to kind of go to this patio area. So, you know, there's going to be some delineation there. I don't think you could probably, could somebody just enter the property and park anyplace in the back where you would really need to go through the front desk or there'll be a valet person there, correct? Is that how it's going to work?
We're not asking the audience. We've closed the public hearing, so this is council discussion.
I think that the valet will manage the front lot that's intended for loading and unloading and that the driveway that we see here to the right of the drawing or the south of the building would be open to people wanting to go to the back. That wouldn't be managed in the same way. But just by being able to use the valet service, they're better able to manage parking and better stack and use what they have. We are looking forward to receiving from them a parking management plan on how they will best use the space in terms of valet and in terms of their employee parking management so we know that they will achieve some level of efficiency back there based on the valet and other planned uses than it just being simply first-come, first-served parking.
So there, we could have options in terms of the valet possibly letting them park onsite or the valet could park them on the street? Do we have those kind of options in front of us?
No, we don't typically allow onsite uses to park on the street. So it would be accommodated onsite somehow.
Because it's an onsite use.
And it could result in the reconfiguration of spaces so they could do more tandem or more stack spaces for better efficiency.
Okay.
Councilwoman Durham?
Or to assume that, as I have done when it was Velagio, before these current owners had it, I walked in and had breakfast with my friends who were staying there. I've walked to the spa and utilized it. Or we let the business owner run their business with valet and possibly stack two cars that might pull up and want to have a drink out on the patio, correct?
Correct.
I feel like we're finding a solution to a problem that doesn't exist. We have, we have an approved plan with 300-plus square feet in question, and I don't see there, there's never been a problem. I don't see this being a problem. It was approved in a very similar fashion and I find it kind of surprising that we're, you know, I know that the ownership and the management team would not have preferred to make these changes were it not the easement with the City of Napa's issue. But I think this is minimal, if any impact. I don't even see why we're having a conversation about the parking. There has never been a problem with parking there and with valet even being more enhanced, we see it happening at Vintage House right now. There is not a problem. Those cars disappear magically and there's no backup in the front of the building. There are shared uses by onsite guests and offsite visitors, so I anticipate the exact same situation here. It's the same management and the same ownership. So, but other thoughts? Councilmember Dorman?
Thank you. I, I thought I made it clear that I don't have a horse in the race. I think it's also clear that they are asking for an expansion of their use space. I think it's also clear that we have other businesses here in town who would like to be public-serving but cannot because we have said you don't have enough parking. I don't think it's really, rises to the level of a useless conversation. I like the design. I love the property. I've used it a lot. I will continue to use it a lot. However, my vote will have to be cast on the basis of what is fair. We need to apply the rule equally across the board. We are adding use space. We have told other people, when you add space, you have to add parking or you have to come back to us and say, here's your new ordinance, it's triggered, I don't want, I want you to increase or decrease my parking. I'm very interested in the process because that's how things go wrong, when the process is not used properly. Thank you.
Mayor, council, if I could, hearing some of the dialogue, I might want to offer a discussion point because I do think there's two elements. One is historical use, how something may or may not have been done, and structural. One is just trying to be realistic with where we're at. It could be that the council could consider a condition that says, to clarify the public use of the lounge patio, the applicant will need to either make a determination with staff. It appears to me that based on what our planning director is saying, that they can probably comply with the parking. So maybe the simplest way, and this will address and close the last little loop, if I could, on what's open because based on the 1997 approvals that the attorney reviewed, it's fairly clear that we allow for a limited public access to the spa, the old spa back at that point in time, the conference space. So, and again, as is typical of this type of a hotel shared use, we've applied a shared parking standard because we recognize that the number of spaces is less because guests are using a majority of them. So I'm just suggesting that it might be appropriate, since I see more consensus, that we consider a condition. This also resolves one of those urban myths, if you will, in Yountville about whether the lounge and patio is open to the public. I just offer that.
Other council comments?
I have a question.
Yes, Councilwoman Durham?
Did we not agree several meetings ago that we were allowed to take into each an individual consideration for parking? For each business, correct?
It's in within, it's within the council's authority to increase or decrease the minimum parking standard, based on the specifics of the use.
Based on the specific of the use. So, and in this case of a hotel, it's not people driving to a destination restaurant that needs parking right at the restaurant. It's additional use. There's three, four things going on at this property. Very good.
Further discussion or action?
Well, I am certainly in favor of, you know, public access and clarifying because we are not clear, so we, I definitely favor clarifying the use of that lounge patio, I guess that's what we're calling it tonight, so that I'm not going to restrict the use whether you're staying at the hotel or you're not staying at the hotel. Seems like there, there are sufficient, if we go with one to three, one to three or one to five, seems like we have sufficient parking and we don't have to assume that, you know, everyone from town is going to fill it up. I mean, we don't really know what that ratio is. So I just see that the only thing we have to do is clarify that the lounge patio, and it's not really another condition, it's a clarification, correct? That we just, I'd be willing, I personally don't, I love the old design, I have to live with the new design, so I just have to say that. But I say, I would recommend approval with the addition of clarifying that the outdoor and the side patio are not restricted to use by the guests only.
Is that in the form of a motion or are you still discussing?
I could make a motion if people want to hear one. I'll go ahead and, oh, I just hit the wrong button. Let me get back to this. So I'll make a motion, as I can get to the resolution number, that we approve, Resolution Number 18-3479, approving master development plan amendment, including design review for shortened portico share and other exterior modifications for the lobby building at Hotel Velagio located at 6481 Washington Street, Assessor Parcel Number 036-330-010, with a clarification that the front lounge and side lounge patios are not restricted to guest use only.
Gary, where would that type of language properly be added?
So I can pull up the resolution. Sandra, do you have a particular place where you think that should be added? I think you can direct staff to add it to the particular, basically...
Is it really a resolution add? Is it more of a use permit clarification?
Well, part of the issue before you tonight is the design review application. So conditions can still be placed on it under the Appicative Municipal Code. And because the design change affects the use, the condition, sorry, the condition, clarifying past use and historical approach that the town has taken to the previous conditions in the use permit, simply provides clarity of past practice. So I think it can be after the findings or as part of the findings in the resolution.
Or in the recitals?
I think you could add it to finding four C.
Are we adding a C in that category?
Well, just add to my amendment that it go under the findings in the resolution and take your time figuring out where it needs to go.
Steve, you're proposing in the design review findings for adding a C but leaving it, and that's what I believe you're saying.
Correct, I think it fits the category there.
Motion is not concerning the exact location, leaving it up to staff to properly word and add.
Okay. Gary, how about adding it as a condition that clarifies the use associated with the design?
Yes, that works.
That would, okay. That would be easier because we'd be able to identify it more readily and know that it's part of the use in the design. So we can look at whether it fits as a finding or a condition.
Is the motioner comfortable with staff's discretion about that add?
Staff discretion on that, I think is most appropriate to give time to give it due thought, as long as it goes in there in the right spot according to staff.
Is there a motion, or second to that motion?
I'll second.
Okay, discussion. Vice Mayor, did you have something?
Yes, I have another question for you, Sandra. Does that then trigger the parking space dilemma?
No, my understanding is they have sufficient parking even if it is applied in a ratio under a designated use.
And it would be clarifying an approved and ongoing use that wasn't clear in the 97 approval.
Okay, thank you.
Councilwoman Dorman?
Sorry, thank you. I have a similar question. I realize they have sufficient parking for, to add the three spaces at a one to five ratio. My question for the movement on the motion, Councilmember Moller, is, does your motion include that parking, there is a parking requirement for the extra 360 square feet of public space use?
No, it doesn't, I don't think that it needs to do that because it's not, I mean, the, we don't really know at this time how many, you know, locals versus hotel guests are going to be there. And there is adequate parking. I certainly understand your point that you want to then take so many parking spaces out so they don't have any extra ones that would account for this. But I don't think we have any way of really knowing from a hotel property how many people are really going to be there. So that's why, I'm not going to make it a condition. I think what I was trying to do is actually clarify the use because you could certainly make an argument back in 1997, since it wasn't clear that that was always intended for public to be there and the existing parking places those last 20 years were adequate. So that would be my rationale for not including that at this time and just making it a clarification.
So the intended emotion is full-bolt public use, no additional parking is required.
Right, and so if another business came to me, that would be my justification to them that I was simply clarifying something from 1997 where the intended use, because I believe that's been the practice, that people could go there. So it's always been the situation. So it would not be necessarily a new situation.
Even though it's larger?
No, because, you know, you could have even more people, you know, go in and visit more friends and have more brunches that they pay for. So it's been ongoing. So that would be my argument for just simply making a clarification.
So we have a motion and a second. If there's no further discussion, I think we're going to go with a voice vote, I'm guessing. So all in favor of the motion as presented?
Aye.
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 Opposed? So they're four to one, Councilwoman Dorman opposing. That passes. Thank you very much. And thank you for the discussion. Let's move on to the master fee schedule update hearing. Need to change some seats.
It's a pleasure to be here. My name is Priya Nixon and I'm here to talk about the master fee schedule update, specifically fees that are listed, proposed above the CPI. This is different than our standard protocol, than the annual administrative update that I'm going to talk about later tonight. And this is because these fees are fees that currently exist in the master fee schedule and are proposed above the CPI. So as required by law, we need to present those fees to you. You'll see in your staff report that there are five fees that we're proposing that are being listed above the CPI. And in Exhibit A, you'll notice that there is a calculation column that explains a little bit about why we need to increase those fees. For parks and rec, we have the generations room cleaning fee and security guards. And then we also have for parks and rec, an increase for swim lessons for residents and non-residents. And you'll notice that that description talks about the full cost recovery of the service. And then for planning, we have the master assigned plan and master assigned plan amendment, and that is listed as a new deposit to fully recover the costs. But the actual amount of the permit is at cost, so they give that deposit. And with that, I'll entertain any questions, but that is my staff report. Thank you.
So before I open the public hearing, do we have questions about the staff report? Seeing none, open the public hearing, invite any members of the audience. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and invite discussion or action by the council. It could have been such a perfect presentation of the report that we may just move right along here. Let's hope. Is there a motion to be had?
Well, I'll make a motion. We approve Resolution Number 18-3480, a resolution of the Town, Council of the Town of Yountville, adopting regulatory and other fees and charges for the master fee schedule update.
I'll second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No, that passes unanimously. Thank you very much.
Also, just for the public record with Priya's first announcement, we also have eliminated three fees. So there were three categories of charges before that are no longer applicable.
Very good. Thank you. So those are our three public hearings. We're going to move on to our first administrative regular item, discussion about the possibility of naming the Pocket Park home to Chaos Pamplona after the Bardasano family.
Thank you, Mayor, council. I won't be long. There's a fairly detailed staff report on the item, but not too long ago, Steve Bardasano recently passed away and community leaders and residents came together and said, what might we be able to do to honor somebody that has this kind of civic involvement and engagement? And in conversations with the family, it really became much clearer that it's the contributions of the multiple generations of the family. And the presentation, staff report, goes into some more detail, but really, I think it's important to recognize that the first Bardasanos chose to live here, which created the second generation of Bardasanos, which both with Steve and Pete and their wives, Pat and Maxine, were both very involved in the civic infrastructure of starting the incorporation. Pete passed away quite a while ago, but Pete was one of the first public works employees for the Town of Yountville and was heavily involved in actually the predecessor entity when it came to wastewater and some sanitary issues. when it came to wastewater and some sanitary issues. So, and then Pat and Maxine, along with the whole family, have had an incredible engagement with the social Yountville Elementary School, the focus and a number of community organizations. So, the direction that we're requesting from the council is, one, consideration that we name the currently unnamed Pocket Park between the Bardessano Hotel and the Yountville Community Center as the Bardessano Family Park and that we're currently working with the family on a design idea for four historical plaques that would be placed along the pathway that reflect the historical contributions of the Bardessano family, including also, I'd point out, the commitment to affordable housing. So, there's a whole legacy we're working on with the family. And that element, we're still going to fine tune and would bring back to you. But we kind of, in accordance with the town's adopted policies on naming, and before we go further ahead, we need to get council direction and support and authorization to move forward. So, with that, happy to answer any questions you have. Family representatives are here.
And before we move on, I'll just add, since I've joined Steve in some of the conversations with Bardessano families, the storyboards, commemorative plaques, we think maybe three or four. We don't know exactly the locations, but we believe what would be appropriate if approved along the pathway fairly close to the east side or the backside of the park. We talked about potentially extending that beyond, all along that walkway, but maybe concentrating them a little bit more into the park area makes sense. The generations of the families have offered to help with design, help with finding vendors that can fabricate these things. And also, there are several people that are involved helping with the financing of whatever we end up, assuming we end up with something. So, that's just a little bit more additional clarification. Any questions of the staff report? Councilor Dormin?
No.
So, I'll invite members of the families, if you'd like to come up and comment, or if you, you don't have to, but since you're here, why not?
Thank you for inviting us this evening. It does bring back many memories. We've been, we have spent many, many hours in this room. And I would like to say that the Bardessano brothers, Pete and Steve, and our families have always worked diligently to find the right land uses for the farming property they inherited from their hardworking immigrant parents. Our family motto was always, and it's always been, if it's good for the town of Yountville, it will be good for the family. Thank you for this recognition. It does bring back many memories. Thank you again.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Thank you. I hope you don't say no.
Seeing no other members of the public coming forward, additional discussion by the council? Councilor Dormin?
I'm ready to make a motion when that's timely.
Is there any further discussion? Councilmember Moller?
I think this is great. I just actually ran into Maxine on the Bardessano Family Park this afternoon as we were walking around. So, I think it's great. And I really like the idea of the storyboards, too. And depending on the placement, I just want to make a repeat request that somewhere down the line, we consider lighting that path. It's very, very dark over there. I don't want anybody to run into sharp storyboard. So, I just want to make sure I throw that out there.
It's already been discussed.
I'll just clarify also that lighting along the path is a condition of the development of the Bardessano suite.
So, we've talked about whether that negatively impacts residential neighbors along the path, hotel impacts along the path. And as the staff report says, the, especially the storyboards are still in concept stage. So, all of that will be worked out. If, we certainly wouldn't put them along the path where they could actually, you know,
to my rent engine when it's dark. Yes, okay, good.
But we did talk about whether illuminating them with a very narrow lighting, some kind of pin lighting or whatever, might be appropriate, but it might also not be appropriate because it's typically not what we've done in other park areas. So, I think those details are still to be worked out. Yes, Vice Mayor?
I just want to say, this is, it's such a delight to have something so easy to recommend. And I'm so happy to do it. You certainly deserve it. Thank you.
The one other thing I'll just add, and then I'll invite Councilor Dormin to make a motion, I believe you were ready to do that, is that the representatives from the Arroyo Grande Housing Development have also expressed an interest in participating in this. They want to recognize the contributions the Bardessanos have made by donating the land to support those 25 units. So, I just wanted to acknowledge that they are part of this conversation and effort as well. So, without, Councilmember Dormin?
Thank you, Mayor. I move adoption of resolution number 18-3481, approving the naming of Bardessano Family Park for town property adjacent to Yountville Community Center and Bardessano Inn, and authorizing installation of historical plaques along public right of way on the path.
I'll second.
I don't think there's any further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That passes unanimously. Thank you very much. And just so the council and the public are aware, Steve and I have had several conversations already. We're going to continue to talk to the family about timing for all this sometime, we hope, later this year. Certainly, the park designation with a sign that can be made by our Public Works team can happen in the very, very near future. We will hold a dedication for the park. And then as we put the storyboard content and location and all those details together, we'll come back and share those details. But thank you all very much for being here.
Excuse ourselves.
Yes.
Thank you.
Plenty of hours in this room.
Very nice.
I can remember this as the cafeteria and the kitchen back there and having spaghetti, the raised money for the school and everything. Lots of memories. Thank you very much.
You're very welcome.
Thank you.
Next up, community pool schedule changes. Samantha?
Hi, me again. As you may have read, we did send a press release out ahead of this evening just because of timing. And we did start summer registration today for programs. And so, we needed to get ahead of that. So, included in your staff report was a lot of information, but it has been increasingly difficult over the past several years to recruit and retain lifeguards and swim instructors for our seasonal community pool. We've been lucky for the past seven years to have really strong pool managers. So, people who were, had come up through the programs and stayed with us. Last year, we had over half of our staff were brand new and others have moved on. So, we do not have a returning pool manager this year. So, we've been attempting to fill that position as well. And all of the returning lifeguards are only going into their second year of employment with us. So, bringing someone up into that type of leadership role really isn't in the cards for this season. We began our formal application process and recruitment process in early February. That was to get the word out early, have a big, long application period. And also, we had in front of the students who may be taking the certification course over spring break. To date of this staff report, which was completed late, or excuse me, early last week, we had only received four applications for 10 lifeguard positions that we need to fill in order to continue with our full schedule of programs. This is not a Yountville-only problem. It is exacerbated here because we don't have a high school and we don't have a lot of residents within that young adult age group. But it is a nationwide problem. Just looking online and also at other, like, service industry, aquatics papers and magazines and websites. It's something that has been going on nationwide for quite a few years. But like I said, we've been fortunate enough here to have strong leadership to kind of carry us through. Last summer, we did end up canceling several sessions with, or several classes within sessions of swimming lessons. We were also understaffed last summer as well, but it wasn't as noticeable. So, some cities in our area, American Canyon, they have, they operate a year-round pool. And they have resorted to assigning full-time Parks and Recreation staff to actually teach certification courses at their high school for PE credit. Obviously, this is reallocating their full-time staff time away from other things to focus there. But again, they offer a year-round pool there. So, it's even more detrimental for them to continue year-round as our pools only open for 10 weeks. Some cities are showing or sharing that they are also noticing about a 70, up to a 70% decrease in applications they're receiving and trying to offer different incentives for people to, excuse me, to get certified as a lifeguard. It is a first responder job. The training is rigorous. It has a physical component as well as far as swimming and retrieving, you know, 80-pound brick from the bottom of the pool, as well as an academic portion. The training itself is 40 hours and is costly. We have offered reimbursements for the cost of that over the past few years, two years. This would have been our third year doing that. And we've had several of our new lifeguards come online through that program. But it's not enough to sustain our current level of programming. So, obviously, the safety of our patrons at the pool is optimum priority. I hate having a problem that I can't solve. Honestly, this was a very difficult decision for us. We have to have a minimum staffing level just to open the gates. There has to be a minimum level of staff onboard and then also just in the facility in the event that there is an emergency. And we will hopefully get there. With the number of applicants, we have, we're confident that we can program the limited schedule that I've proposed. But we will not be able to offer swimming lessons unless we can bring on considerably more staff, and that includes a pool manager. So, right now, we internally are interviewing and bringing on as many lifeguards as we can. That doesn't solve the pool manager issue. Jennifer Carvallo's been with our department for a very long time, but she started as a lifeguard at the age of 15 and has also managed the pool. She is the only person on staff that has the certifications to actually act as a pool manager. You are required to be a certified lifeguard in that position. So, we have, we're going to be moving some duties around between Lisa Tyler and Jennifer in order to accommodate that. So, Jennifer can be at the pool for 20 hours a week to keep it open for rec swim. So, when we looked at making these decisions and cutting swimming lessons, we looked at several factors, which was, are there other service providers in the area? How many residents versus non-residents utilize these services? And are there other ways to fill the gaps? And there are seven easily identifiable other, whether it's private or recreation departments in our area, both north and south, that offer swimming lesson options year-round and also during the summer. There are less options for community rec swim unless you're a member of, whether it's a fitness club or a private community pool. And we're actually only one of two facilities in the area that have the toddler area for swimming. So, we, as far as the other programs and the schedules on the website, it was presented in the, also in the press release, we would continue with our free entry for seniors and veterans. We would be doing that. They would, they have free entry during all of our community rec swim hours, but then we would be limiting the exclusive time to Tuesday through Saturday from 11 to 12. So, that's instead of two hours, six days a week, they would be coming one hour, six days a week. That's also combined with lap swim at the same times. That's consistent with the last three years. We've combined all, both of those programs together, just because utilization is pretty low. And we would continue with our resident family swim night just on Saturdays, sensory Saturdays, and then pools, pool parties. The difference in all of those things is that we would now be closed on Sundays as well. So, the pool would be open Tuesday through Saturday. A couple of the questions that have come up are, and I'm sure you think about that as I do, how are we affecting our residents first? And then how does it affect the community as a whole with non-residents? The pool is about a 20, if you average everything out, we have about 24% resident utilization of the pool, about 21% during community and rec swim, and 25% for swimming lessons. In 2017, we had 256 drop-in days for the senior veteran swim time. So, 256 people visited us over 50 days. So, that's about five people a day for that program. In comparison, our community rec swim had just under 4,000. So, it's a big difference. So, when we looked at cutting actual hours during the day, we looked at, okay, going from two hours to one hour for seniors and veterans is still providing that service, but paring it down so that the day is manageable. Another question was what would we need to fully staff the pool? We would need 15 lifeguards and a pool manager to try to rebuild what we have had in the past as far as adding swimming lessons and more schedules back. I don't feel very confident that that will happen at this point, but if we're able to find a pool manager and add additional lifeguards, then we could start adding swimming lessons back. Our priority would be to offer those to residents first. An example of something we planned in turn, because we really want young children to be safe around water, is doing two different Saturday mornings where we would do a resident-only safe swim, safe water type of class. So, we would offer that to the community, not in place of, but hopefully in supplement of. So, I'll just end with, this is not a very, is not an easy decision. Took a lot of time to figure out how we could divert things. We really don't have the staff capacity in our full-time staff to say, we're going to put somebody up there 40 hours a week to add back swimming lessons. We really need some sort of manager. It's a really, it's a stretch for us to have Jennifer up there 20 hours a week. So, we're definitely going to be limping by. And again, this will just, over the next year, and I told you before, we're really going to be doing some difficult analysis as far as the pool's concerned and really just preparing you for what's coming. There are some significant capital improvement projects that are going to have to happen to keep the maintenance level at the pool. That, paired with the utilization drop that we're seeing, is something that I think really needs our attention. So, I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you. Questions of the staff report? So, this really is not driven by financial issues. It's really all about personnel and the inability to find people willing to take these positions.
Absolutely. And we have put more time and money into this recruitment than we ever have. I mean, by tenfold, going out to the schools personally, speaking to groups, going to job fairs, paying online. And unfortunately, it's difficult in our area and a lot of areas in general to recruit young adults these days. They can work in the service industry for more money typically, but it's also not a pay thing. We're very competitive in our field. And it's also that people don't, people say, oh, well, I'll come do it. I'll come, I'll become a lifeguard or I'll, you know, have, I have a friend who could do it or something like that. And there's really not, they are very much trained as a first responder. I mean, not obviously the long hours as a paramedic, but there's very strenuous physical activity that has to be accomplished. And then you have to be certified. I mean, they are there to rescue you when you are at your absolute worst and keep you alive until a paramedic comes on site. That's a big job for a 15, 16, 17, 18-year-old, especially in this day and age where less and less kids are driving and less and less kids are working through high school because of everything else. So, it is not, the town is not saying we don't have the money.
Right. Vice Mayor?
Sam, I've talked to quite a few veterans who really enjoy that time, even though it's not as many as we would hope. But is there a possibility that if we were to, able to add more lifeguards and a pool manager, that we might also be able to extend the hours for the seniors?
Absolutely. Yeah, we're going from one hour a day, or two hours a day to one hour a day. And I think, you know, if we can get more management hours is really my concern is the management piece of it. We can look at how to strategically accommodate that. But I think, too, is just, you know, for us in our messaging to the veterans home is just to remind them that they're always welcome during, for free during our community swim hours. And so, the pool might And so the pool might not just be full of adults, or they're used to having it a pretty good, because there's maybe four or five other people there while they're there. But if they're not opposed to that, they can come up to five hours a day for five days a week. So, there's no fee for that.
I also want to share, we've reached out to the veterans' home to talk about staffing, and if there's any capacity for them or their employees to help. And we're generally not, you know, that's not in their cards either. So they don't have staff resources that they're able to move over and deploy either.
So, we're not, you're not asking for formal action? This is really just informational on the decisions you've made?
Yeah, it's definitely informational. We just wanted to have it on this item in the agenda, in case you wanted to have dialogue on it. So, I appreciate your time.
And obviously, you'll react as possible if circumstances change.
Absolutely.
Right.
But this isn't gonna change. I mean, the front page of the Wall Street Journal today had the article, I mean, if aerospace engineering is having to turn to high school students to fill their jobs, once again, it's another thing to compete with. So I'm gonna be the negative one here, and say that through my past time sitting up here, I've always had great concern about the amount of money from this town that goes into the pool. And I think it's a difficult analysis that needs to start now, with this current budget process going up, because this is not gonna change. Less kids are gonna be driving, less kids are gonna step up for this opportunity in the summer, and it's gonna continue this way, especially in this state for quite some time. And we need to, we need to keep that in mind as we're talking about the budget this year.
And I think-
Especially when the, when you just stated that the veterans' home hasn't been able to step up either.
Director Holland mentioned to you that we, this is really the harbinger of another report that's coming to you, because we've actually been tracking and managing this. We are gonna have some difficult conversations. Part of our challenge really is also, one, we don't generate a lot of high school-age youth that are the normal pattern. You know, if you were growing up, you might work locally. So many of our youth, they have to drive from someplace here. So as you pointed out, they're not driving. And then the schedule. We also only operate a 10-week season. So when somebody has a choice of looking at the Calistoga Year-Round Pool with hours, part-time, American Canyon, or the two, and I will point out that the city of Napa only operates two pools in partnership with their schools. So a very different kind of relationship isn't. But yes, we're gonna be bringing to you what the long-range fixed costs and capital costs of continuing the investment, and we're gonna need to have a different conversation also with the veterans' home, because if it really is a community interest in need, we need to look at some things differently. And as Director Holland pointed out, our statistics clearly show that even on our best years, we hit a 20% to 25% resident ratio. And this is not one of the areas where I will say, you know, we're very pleased to generally tell you that the ratio helps us to offer a class. This one has a very significant general fund subsidy, and it's not in a similar situation to whether a Zumba class goes, or some of our other things, where the, you know, a proportionate share of non-residents helps to ensure the viability program. This one, for whatever reason, doesn't seem to have a lot of interest from residents.
Okay.
But to your point, Jeff, we are analyzing that. I will not have enough time to come with, to you with something that is well-thought-out and concrete by the budget hearings, but I assure you that we're definitely working on that.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you, Samantha.
Thank you, Sam.
We'll move on to the next item. Introduction and first reading of the ordinance related to public parking spaces, stopping, standing, and parking of vehicles. Mr. Tagliabashi, welcome.
Thank you very much.
I do not.
Oh.
This is no PowerPoint.
What?
Hey, I can hear. I can. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, it's my pleasure this evening to introduce and waive the first reading of the ordinance amending Chapter 10.28 of Title 10 of the Yountville Municipal Code regarding public parking spaces, stopping, standing, and parking of vehicles. So the more detailed staff report is in your package this evening. The short story on this is we have many parking lots, most of the parking lots in town, all of the parking lots in town, we do not have the ability to ticket, cite, or remove cars that are parked for a variety of reasons. Here around Town Hall, for instance, we need the parking spots for both town staff, the school staff, and also people, residents and visitors who come here to do business in Town Hall. However, there are quite a few staff from the businesses around town that use this parking lot as a parking spot. The same is true for the back parking lot, and also true for other parking lots that are town-owned around town, Community Call, Community Center, some of the parks. This also gives us the ability to mark the curbs and spaces in these parking lots, similar to what you would see out on street parking for handicapped, red zones, yellow zones, the array of rainbow colors that we have all recognized for helping us identify what a parking spot is for on the street. We would like to have those same, that same ability with designations for off-street parking in the lots around town. Our intent is to come back with a resolution that would better define the parking lots that we intend to have this ordinance apply to, and some of the, and the times and specifics, so that then we would post the signs in those parking lots appropriately with the vehicle code that applies, so that our sheriffs or law enforcement could either cite or have them towed in extreme conditions when needed, which we don't, again, have the ability to do now. This would also give us some ability to set up some no-parking in some of the neighborhoods should that be needed, depending on the situation and the location. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have. As I said, the bigger report is in your package for this evening.
Thank you. Question to the report. Governor Mueller.
So, just to be clear, this is just going to allow us the flexibility to do something? That something will come back later for specific approval. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's correct. So in order to impose a fine or a civil penalty, it has to be a violation of an ordinance in municipal code that establishes this, the ability to fine. It also gives the council the ability by resolution to specify the duration of parking in a public parking space, and also other limitations on times of day and the like. Resolutions can be brought forth at any time and become effective immediately, so that gives the council the flexibility to change that in the future without having to go through the whole process of an ordinance.
So just because we have the signs out in the town parking lot doesn't mean that we could enforce it?
That's what we've learned.
Okay.
So this is our effort, and I think a great illustration to your point, Mayor, is the restrictions we have here at Town Hall, for example, we open it to the public after 5:00, but we found that we were not able to issue citations. So you will come back and see a resolution with, you know, probably each public lot with a little narrative describing what we're intending to do.
We all saw that today, so. Any members of the public like to comment on this? Seeing, seeing members of the public, but no one coming forward. Any further discussion? Councilmember Dorman?
I have a question for staff. So, the resolution that we see at our next meeting on second reading will have specifics in it? Is that what you're saying?
No. This is an ordinance, and it requires us to bring you a resolution. So we will be bringing you a resolution, for example, it will talk about Town Hall Lot Front, blah, 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 blah. Town Hall Lot Rear, you know, here's the hours that are restricted, here's the hours, permit, exception.
So, and if none of the sub-resolutions come forward, then we have this on the books, and that is, anywhere there's a red curb, we will have to put a sign that says, "May be towed, if we wish to tow." Is that what it means by "may remove"? I'm assuming that means tow car.
Correct. And we do not have a, we do not have a strong towing philosophy. We generally use education through warning tickets, communication, and then secondly, we'll go citation. And only then, if we get into a situation with law enforcement, would we go into a tow process.
So, let's take, for example, in front of Wells Fargo, Wine Country Connection, et cetera, there's a red curb, there's a green curb, they butt one another. If we do no sub-resolutions, who decides whether we post a sign, two signs on those 50 feet?
I want to clarify, you've got public street parking versus public parking lots. So red zone parking on the street that you described is very different than the parking lots we're identifying.
So this applies only, although it discusses curbs, it applies only to parking lots?
Yeah.
That's what threw me.
Yeah, I will clarify. I will clarify. So Section 2 of the ordinance in front of you, the current language in the municipal code already talks about curbs on the public streets, and the town engineer already has the authority to put up signs regarding those curbs and to paint those curbs. This simply expands that authority to public parking spaces in town parking lots.
Okay, and so getting kinda into the nitty-gritty on Point 020B, where it talks about the town's contracted vendor. As I read 22651N of the state law, it talks about, quote, "a regularly-employed and salaried employee who is engaged in directing traffic or enforcing parking laws and regulations." How does that square with a contracted vendor?
So-
I'm sure it does, I just want to know how.
Yeah, no problem. So as you probably know, the town contracts with the sheriff to do enforcement of certain things, so it's contracted, but the sheriff is also a regularly-salaried employee. There have been case law in this area that allows that kind of arrangement, because it's very common with small jurisdictions.
Okay, so it's not a regularly-employed and salaried employee of the town necessarily?
Correct.
Okay. And then there in Point 020B, like Boy 1, it talks about a line painted red. What is that?
So Joe might be able to jump in on this, but as I understand it, that can mean like a parking space that's not necessarily adjacent to a curb, but has been parked red in order to allow fire and other emergency vehicles to get through an otherwise area that someone might park in.
And so if the whole space is painted red, it says that the vehicle cannot be adjacent to a red parking space. Is that correct?
That's right.
Can it not, it can't be in the red parking space? Can it not be adjacent to it either?
Yes, I think that's correct. Sometimes in a parking lot, you'll see just a red stripe instead of the actual curb, and I think that that's what this is trying to get to.
Okay, because I think it, the actual language is, hold on, B1. It says, "The vehicle is parked or left standing adjacent to a red curb, a red line, a line painted red, or a red painted parking space." So I just wanted to make sure adjacent is the proper word there.
I believe it is.
I think so, because in some, think about surface lots. Sometimes you've seen walkways where a combination of hatches and yellow or white paint can be used to designate a walkway. The same way a red curb can be designated where an area is not supposed to park. Same way you can take a parking lot and have blue marks for handicap, even though it's just a large asphalt area or section. So I think what we're really trying to clarify there is, if you're in a, you know, a red, we'll just call it a red area, and it could be a curb, line, because sometimes you paint on, if there's no curb, for example, a good example might be up at Yountville Community Park on the very north end, there's no curbs in those areas. So there you would have a red line versus, or in a parking lot. So I think, hopefully that gives you some clarification.
And again, this is to apply only to public parking facilities?
Correct.
Correct?
Town.
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 Sorry.
Municipal facilities.
Parking lots.
The private sector has a similar process that they need to go through as well, but, and they have to identify the recovery mechanism. But yes, we're talking about our ability to manage our town-owned parking supply.
And Section 2 does apply more broadly to curbs generally, not just public parking spaces and parking lots, just to clarify that. But that's existing authority in the municipal code.
Right. Okay. And then, the stop-stand, no-stop-stand-park signs we already have, does that affect the ordinance we did not too long ago on that? Does any of this affect that?
No, that ordinance addressed stopping, parking, and standing vehicles on the streets specifically, and made fines and penalties for those violations. Those are still in effect. This now applies similar authority to parking lots, essentially.
And where do we say, I mean, just point me to, where do we say parking lots?
Public parking space.
Okay, and that's what, we know that's code for parking lots.
Off-street parking is also, it's also referred to as off-street parking in the staff report.
Okay. Public parking lot. Thank you very much.
Is there a motion on this item? To introduce and waive the reading?
You're looking over here, so I might as well get going.
Anybody?
Ordinance number 18-472, an ordinance of the Town Council of Yountville amending Chapter 10.28 of Title 10 of the Yountville Municipal Code regarding public parking spaces and stopping, standing, and parking of vehicles.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, master fee schedule.
And waive the first reading.
Thanks, Joe. So this is an informational report. There won't be any action on this, I take it? So we're just gonna have a brief informational report?
Correct.
And Priya was perfect last time, so she's gonna be perfect again this time.
Thank you, again. Last item. Thanks for your time tonight. So, the mayor is correct, yes, this is the annual administrative update of the master fee schedule. There is no action required on council's part. We're just here to let you know that we have applied the 3.8% CPI to all of the fees that get the CPI increase, and we will also add the fees that you recently adopted, those changes as well. And you'll notice that for this master fee schedule, due to the rate increases, those have also been included in the attachment for the proposed master fee schedule for 2018-19. And with that, I'll take any questions.
Any questions? There aren't any questions, are there?
Yes.
Councilmember Dorman?
I have a process question. What is the process if, for example, council wanted to take up changing some of these fees?
You would need to modify the adopted policy guidelines that were adopted establishing them.
That would be agendized as an item at a later meeting.
Just to clarify, the earlier resolution on the agenda was that exact same process. In order to adjust a fee above a prior authorization of the council, there needs to be a public hearing, and it becomes effective 60 days after, and the whole thing.
And I think perhaps for additional background, Councilmember Dorman, when we initially went down this process, there was a process where the fees were established based on a cost nexus. And I will also point out that not all of our fees are actually cost-recovered. We talked about some of those, and in the past, we've actually lowered some fees. Another example, our tree removal permits, we do not cost-recover. We have a nominal fee, so we can encourage people to come in. And so there was a lot of legwork that went into the initial adoption of the master fee schedule. And in fact, we had to pull a bunch of things, because individual fees had been put into the ordinance, and in some cases, never been updated. So we cleaned everything out, and then when you adopt an ordinance, much like you did, it refers to an establishing fees by resolution, and then the council adopted the guidance policy that adopted and established a master fee schedule and the maintenance thereof.
I would suggest that if you have specifics that you want to bring to the attention of staff, that you do that, and potentially before we get into the budget season. We're already in the budget season, but. Thank you, Priya.
Thank you.
Council meeting reports, are there any that are critical?
Well-
Critical reports.
They'll be fast. We've been putting them off unless you want to hear about something three months later. So, WAFCO, on April 2nd, we met, and Sanalina has asked for a delay in their MSR SOI. They want a delay until they finish their general plan update. They may be requesting sphere of influence changes. They may be requesting sphere of influence changes. Also, fees that Yountville pays to WAFCO for anybody budget in the backyard, they're going up 5%, but they're still less than they were 15, 16, and 16, 17. I think we're talking about $1,000. And we voted Gregory Rodino, who's going to now fill the public seat vacated by Brian Kelly, and I will be chair of the next, chair for starting of the next meeting. Upper Valley Waste Management, they, we have been accepting up to 160,000 tons from Napa and Sonoma Fire debris, and as a consequence, our revenues have gone up. That's the good news, if you can find a silver lining to the fires. And in addition, our JPAs made over $500,000 because we get a dollar for every ton that we tip, and so we're going to be exploring ways to divvy that up or spend that amongst our communities. So, we'll be talking about that next time. And I want to report that Sanalina and Calistoga have also started their own cleanup days modeled after Yountville. And I attended the Environmental Quality Policy Committee in Pomona. We had very significant discussion about Rubio's bill, AB 3178, which is trying to eliminate the $10,000 a day fine for municipalities if they fall below their 50% recycling mandate. This is really a big deal because China has now implemented, starting in January 1, the National Sword Program. They are no longer taking the vast majority of our recycling, and we have no markets. We only find markets for maybe 90%. I'm talking specifically on plastics now here. So, we, at Environmental Quality, it went all over the map from deny to watch to finally a support and amend. We want to go farther and really get the state to start doing something about creating recycling processing infrastructure, because otherwise, this is all an unfunded mandate. And they still have on the books, we're supposed to hit 75% recycling by 2020. It's really critical. Shredded Day is Friday. Merica West Bank, 2 to 4.
Thank you. MTA meets tomorrow. Councilmember Dorman can report out on that at the next meeting.
I'll be attending.
On my behalf?
Yes.
Thank you. I will be headed from here momentarily, I hope, to Sacramento for the League of California Cities Executive Board Meeting, Nominating Committee for the Second Vice President, and Legislative Action Days, where we are meeting with our legislators tomorrow. The only other thing I wanted to mention was Yountville and the Vintners Golf Course in particular hosted last Thursday's Napa County League of Governments meeting. So, I want to thank Lakeside Grill and Vintners Golf Course and the county who were hosting that event. Is there any other business? Councilmember Dorman?
Thank you. Two hopefully brief things. One is today, the town co-hosted the Leadership Summit for Honoring Choices Napa Valley. Councilmember Mueller and I were there, and maybe there are some other folks in the back, but it was really a great program. We appreciate that. And tomorrow, everybody please come out. It's our second Community Pop-Up Potluck Happy Hour, not a town event, but please come on out, 5:30 to 7:30 in the Heritage Room.
One last thing I did want to recognize, Chef Bob Hurley and his entire Hurley's team as they closed their doors on Sunday. For the last two weeks since the announcement, Yountville residents especially, but also some others in the valley, did honor Chef Hurley and his staff by going in and packing the house almost every night for two weeks. So, he will be greatly missed as a community business owner, but he won't be far away. So, we just want to recognize Bob Hurley, Cynthia Hurley, the Hurley family, and the extended Hurley's family that has served us since at least 2002. So, thank you to all of them. With no other business, we will adjourn to, I'll take a motion to adjourn to a regular meeting of Tuesday, May 1st at 6:00 PM.
Do we have to adjourn to the April 26 General Plan Meeting to all participate?
My understanding is we are agendizing that as a...
Special meeting.
...tag special, a tag meeting, and therefore, the council is able to come because it's an agendized body. There's no action, so that's under, if I'm clarifying what I learned from the attorney.
That is correct. It is a properly agendized meeting of another legislative body of the town, and the council can participate as part of the regularly scheduled meeting.
So, we're adjourning to May 1st, motion and a second?
And I'd like to second and also note that this week, yesterday in fact, Glenn Knoc passed away, and I would hope that we could adjourn in his honor and those family and friends who are grieving him tonight.
And that, we will do that very thing, so that motion and second with the memorial. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you all. Good night.